Dealer board meeting for September 2017 of the Board of Education. We are now in session. Do we have a spotlight on education tonight?
Uh, is that?
No. No? Okay. Then we'll move right to the consent agenda items. Can I get a motion to approve those items?
I'll make that motion.
Even though, I know. Inside.
Second.
In a second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Aye. And opposed? Any community comments tonight? Okay, hearing none, we'll move right on to our administrative reports. Mr. Cook.
Okay, just wanted to mention that we're off to a great start for the school year. Our numbers for enrollment are currently our first run of the third Friday count, which was just Friday. We have the exact same number of enrolled students that we had last year. And as we go through and finalize that report, it may adjust. But if you recall, there were 10 consecutive years of declining enrollment. The last two years, there was a slight increase. And this year, it's leveled off, so we're looking at the same numbers, which is good because we graduated, I believe, 127?
100 graduated from last year?
From last year.
112.
112, okay.
Do we get, this doesn't affect any funding, does it? Don't we get a, didn't we used to get some sort of declining enrollment exemption?
We continue to receive declining enrollment exemption. And actually, it's odd how the revenue limit formula works because as our enrollment goes up, we actually lose some money until we hit the threshold, at which point we break even and move forward due to the declining enrollment exemption that we receive from the state. And it's a three-year rolling average for the revenue limit worksheet, so that's important to keep in mind, too.
Okay, so but it's not a significant effect on what we're doing? Okay.
No. And I was going to mention also, the state superintendent's conference is this week, Wednesday through Friday in Madison. And also, there's some movement forward on the state biennial budget. It's passed the House, it's passed the Senate, and it's currently on the governor's desk. And we're waiting to see and hear what the final results are of the state budget, but we should know, we hope, this week. That's all I have.
Any other administrators have anything you wanted to add?
Parent-teacher conferences? Within the next month before our next meeting, we do a parent-teacher conference. It's coming up October 2nd from 4:00 to 8:00, and October 5th from 1:00 to 8:00. And on October 5th, we also have teacher in-service in the mornings. That's a non-school day for students other than coming to learn all about how they're doing at conferences. I have two field trips coming up. The first one is our annual trip out to Ox Lake with our eighth graders, where they work on some low ropes courses and some team building and leadership training. And then we come back for a real nice anti-bully presentation that's planned by Kate Weisenbeck and our students along with Bob Johnson. And that's the one where Paul Omen paints the class mural then for the school each year. It's been a really, really neat program, and we're excited to have it again coming up a week from Friday on the 29th. And we have a seventh grade science trip to go out and learn about the fish hatchery in St. Croix Falls, and they're going to look at the hydroelectric dam and see how that power works. And so we're pretty excited about that.
Anybody else?
Food for America, Friday, October 13th. That's a really a district-wide activity and is one of our wildly successful events every year. Come prepared for the weather because you never know what you're going to get on that day. It's done everything from sunshiny and 70 to snow, so.
Is that the one that our Ag Department puts on?
Yes. Yep, they've been doing that for a long time. We've got many accolades in the state and the nation for doing such a nice job. And it's awesome to see our younger kids shine. So, October 13th.
We totally enjoy being invited, and the kids and the teachers look forward every year to it. So, thank you to Mr. Meyer and also to Mr. Durfler for allowing us to come over.
Great. Anybody else?
I just wanted to mention also that last Wednesday evening, the school district held the first PLC. We're in our second year of professional learning communities. And how many teachers attended the institute this summer?
Thirteen.
Thirteen, so we had 13 teachers. And our administrators attend the professional learning communities institute in Minneapolis again. And those teachers did, I want to give a shout out to the teachers that did a great job presenting the information to all of our teaching staff last Wednesday. And these are after-school hours that we meet monthly, and it's part of our very dedicated staff, and they did an outstanding job.
Okay. All right. I do have one note on my end, just so you all know that I will be serving on the WASB Policy and Resolutions Committee. So I got to spend a couple of, three days in Stevens Point to do that. But then, in October and November, and then on November 3rd, I'm sorry, November 4th, which is a Saturday, it's the Legislative Advocacy Conference for the WASB in Stevens Point. So I will be, that's the next day following the policy and resolutions. And if anybody else wants to go, it'd be great. Jim and I went to the Day at the Capitol, which was put on by that group and was incredible learning and whatnot. But this is a conference, so I know that Senator Olson, I think Representative Kapinga, several others will be there that day. So probably if we let Dina know on that, she can help make some arrangements as well. But I'll be there for sure, so it'd be great to have some more of us there for that if anybody wants to come. It's most of the day in point. I show up on Friday and stay there for the day Saturday or something, so. Okay. All right. That's the WASB stuff. Anybody else have anything? Okay. Then we can move on to our informational items. Mr. Durfler. Dr. Durfler. We'll get it right someday.
You had it right the first time. As I said before, the only time I've ever been called doctor was by the kids, and then they, by my own kids, and they wondered where my doctor tools were. I thought I was holding out on them. No, guys, there's no doctor's tools around here. Because that's what they think of the doctor. CTE Academy Tech Ed. You heard from Mr. Meyer last spring. You heard last month from Mrs. Larson. And you're going to hear this evening about Tech Ed. And the next month, we're going to talk Business Ed. And that could be a variety of things, because that's entrepreneurship. If you hit up Fall Festival and were next to the tent, you saw what that looked like in the form of holy donuts. Myron was in there doing his thing, and he was making a lot of business, I think.
With both of them now. He's expanded.
Correct. He has, he has. He also has expanded his workforce, so he's trying to figure out that profit margin, I think. Mr. Gange was going to join us this evening, but I told him 7:30 in light of the festivities prior to our regular meetings, so he might be rolling in right around the time we're finishing. But I think he'll be able to handle it. He and I have met with Jim on a couple of occasions, and he has done a tremendous amount of legwork on this task. So if you could bear with me for 10 minutes or so, we'll go through what we're planning to do. The area of CTE Tech Ed, I'm not going to read a paragraph to you. We're going to build houses. That paragraph means we're going to build houses. And when I mean houses, we're going to build one, turn it around for a potential profit, build another, turn it around for a potential profit, build another, et cetera. Mr. Gange is not going to build these houses. Mr. Gange is going to supervise the building of a house by our students with the assistance of this community. Because as you know, when you build a house, you don't do all that work yourself. You need someone to work with your plumbing, someone to work with your electrical, your HVAC, et cetera. Mr. Gange, who built his own house, is going to help our kids learn how to do this. The classes that are in support, construction, if you go back one more, advanced woodworking, building trades, if I can have them all memorized, welding, home and auto repair, machine woods, et cetera. Most of the Tech Ed curriculum applies to this task. There are youth apprenticeships that we can offer our kids. I can't imagine a kid would not want to do a youth apprenticeship in the area of building a home and getting credit for doing so, being off-site, not being in school, perhaps joining a nice fall day or spring day off-campus. Most kids would be interested in that. There are certifications offered through the state of Wisconsin in architecture and construction, manufacturing, welding, HVAC, excellence, machining, and metals. And that's a matter of doing the work and documenting what you've done and getting certification for doing so. We want kids not only to leave with the skills and the abilities, but also, if they can, some certifications that they can present as their own and put on a resume or on an application. Because it is, after all, about preparing them for post-secondary. The business partnerships. This task will not involve every single one of these, but in most cases, almost every single one. We're not going to go outside of the community of Amory to find any of the work that we need done on this home, including the property itself. We have three prospective suitors in regards to selling this land to us, and we're going to have people to help build this house by laying the foundation, putting up the walls, doing the HVAC, the plumbing, and the electricity. And these are all people that live here, that work here, and going to help our kids build this home right here in the community of Amory. And we're going to do it entirely locally. And they're going to assist us by not only imparting the knowledge, but giving us the opportunity to do this. Because they're very busy people that have all sorts of opportunities to do things on their own, but they see an excellent opportunity here for our kids. So these are many of the options. So walking through the courses that exist, I'm not going to belabor the point. You can read this certainly yourself. Advanced woodworking, there's lots of advanced woodworking to do in a house, clearly. And we're going to help our kids develop the knowledge of how that actually works in real time. It's different than building a gun cabinet. Now you're talking about putting cabinetry into a kitchen that actually matches the rest of the kitchen and fits properly. As Mr. Gange himself has said in my presence more than once, you measure twice and you cut once. I've heard him say that, and he's absolutely true. We have building trades, how to build homes, designing of the homes, the architecture, zoning, construction, finishing, all of that happens in building trades. This is a five-term process. The first term that we're actually going to do, this is in the spring of this school year. We're going to do the bookwork, if you will, for building the home. You have to know what you need in order to do this. So we're going to get all of that done, get all of that product ordered, get all of the site prepped. And then in the summer, materials delivered. We're going to have five days that Josh is going to have contact with the kids. We're going to get the site fully ready to go. And in the fall of the next school year, we have an entire term to enclose the home and then do the interior work. And that's where Emily is going to come into play. We've got interior design classes. She's going to help. And then in the spring, we're going to have Business Ed roped in, because now we're going to try and sell the home, market the home, et cetera. And that ropes in almost all of CTE. And then Derek, if we want a landscape, Derek has a class that does that in the spring as well. So it's sort of a CTE umbrella involvement. Home and auto, we have a class, it's two-years-old, home and auto. The maintenance that exists in a home, that's going to happen just by happenstance. Derek's going to work through that, because I can't imagine they're going to do this project from the beginning and not have any snafus in the process. They're going to go ahead and have to address those. And that's up to the kids to figure out how to do that with Derek, with Josh's guidance and with our contractor's guidance. The next item, next slide. Machine woods, you're looking at woodworking, the lumbering industry, natural materials, machinery, and woodworking skills. Manufacturing materials, to build a home, you need a lot of materials. And if you're thinking, what kind of a home is this going to be? You're looking at about a 1,500-square-foot home. We're looking at a modest home for a family that's interested in a modest home. Sell that and then turn that around, hopefully with some profit, to have a startup cost for another. Manufacturing materials will help us with that. Understanding construction, you certainly have to prepare the site. You have to have a foundation, framing, carpentry, electricity, plumbing, heating, and cooling. This is where the rubber meets the road, so to speak. There's a lot to learn here. There are kids that are very handy, that are very interested and very on task with this skill, but to actually do it is another thing. Because you, in many cases, have to do it right the first time, or you go back to the start and you try it all over. So we're going to have to be skillful in our trades. Welding, there is welding to be done. We have two levels of welding, the first of which is welding for mechanics, and the second is project-based welding. So truly, this is level two in so many ways, because there are certainly projects on a house that need to be done. These are all the academic standards. If you're looking for something to put you to sleep this evening, you can peruse the standards. It's nothing that I'm going to read to you. There are three questions, and I'm going to be back here with Mr. Gange to ask you in the month of November. And the three questions are this. How will we finance this project? The second, where will we build this house? Because again, we have three potential sites right now. And lastly, should a buyer for the home be secured prior to construction or after construction is complete? And we're going to need your guidance with those questions, because there are obviously great importance attached to all three of those, and those are decisions that Josh and I are not going to make separate from you. When you talk financing, that certainly involves all of you.
You'll have recommendations for us?
Correct, we do. We sort of already have in mind a recommendation, having that with Jim. We have a notion of where we want to go. It's no secret, we want to be in town, because you're upping your cost greatly when you leave town. Because you're talking well as opposed to having sewer and water patched right in and ready to be hooked up. We want to be financially prudent by all means. So that, that's a very big question. Where, all three of the suitors we have are all very local, right here in town. There's no travel really that is involved there. And lastly, it's just a matter of if you want to have a buyer upfront or a buyer after the fact. Our recommendation, I could tell you now, would be to have a buyer after the fact, because to get one ahead of time might be tricky to do. Housing market is touchy, as you know. So, you have questions for me?
Yes. Just wait for anybody else.
It's a very exciting time.
Well, I have a few. The first and foremost thing is making sure that the kids are covered, any accidents, any situations that may happen, that we have that covered, not only by our staff, but insurance as well.
Correct. Yeah, absolutely. I have to work with district office. We are looking at what other districts have done. We're not the first people to do this. We're looking at what other districts have done to properly ensure our kids. We will not enter into this process without insurance for every single one of the kids that's on-site. That will be an absolute certainty. It's just too risky to do it any other way. Yes.
Are the blueprints already decided upon?
No.
Okay, so if you secure a buyer upfront, then could you see what they want to?
Sure.
And follow that?
Yeah, absolutely.
Is it modest, I guess?
Sure, if we, if we have a person that's looking to buy a home upfront and we know what they want, certainly would follow their lead. But again, that's up to you to determine how you want to do that. The land that you secure is obviously going to determine the size of the home. That's just the reality. And the three lots we're looking at, all would be suitable for about a 1,500-square-foot home.
For the financing, have you thought about investors?
We, we are open to all ideas.
I'm just saying, maybe the guys that are working with the kids and doing this would be?
Maybe.
Want to throw in or the bank?
Absolutely.
We're going to finance through or if we do it that way or whatever.
We know that the two financial institutions in town, Wisconsin and Bremmer, are interested in working with us. We know that. And I imagine Royal would have been too, but they're simply closing shop here, so they're not as viable. But we know they're interested.
I've got to believe the big investment, obviously, is the first time, and then after that, you continue to roll over.
Hopefully.
How does that work, fund-wise?
Don't ask yet.
We're not ready yet? Am I ahead of the game on that?
You are.
Okay, that's fine. No, that's a legitimate answer.
It is. That's a, that's why we want to get this locked in now.
So you're going to come to us and say, here's how this all works?
Right.
So that we have the full package in front of us.
And Josh doesn't want to be tinkering with this in March, April, and May, because he's the guy helping build the home, not financing. We want to work those details out here in the fall, in the winter.
Right. Well, I don't think we want to either.
Yeah, we want to get that all locked in and figured out.
We want to fly by night.
Twilight doesn't have all those answers, because we've never done this before.
Right. So can you give us, maybe in the community, I think it's a big, this is a huge deal.
It's a huge deal.
I, I don't, there's not the excitement, I mean, this is, this is gigantic.
Yep.
Deal for our district.
It is.
So, just the opportunities that we're finally offering to kids that this is what they're going to do for the rest of their lives. I remember, oh my, Mr. Benson probably doesn't remember, but he and I talked about something like this probably 10 years ago, 11 years ago. So to see this happen, I mean, this is a big deal for the district, but maybe for the, for the, the community, can you explain how, A, some of the other districts in our area that have been doing this, so that people know that we're not like jumping on them?
There are not many others that are doing it.
In the state?
In the state, there are many that are doing it.
Right.
And Jim has some experience with that, too. He's got some context and some.
And maybe how, how it's worked for them.
It's worked very, it's worked very well. Go ahead.
Well, there's basically three different ways to do it. And in my experience over the years, I've seen for nearly 20 years, I guess, different school districts that have built houses have taught their, their kids the trades, everything from carpentry to the mason work in concrete, to hanging the drywall, of course, electrical, HVAC, and plumbing, and everything that goes along with it, even the architectural designing. There's basically three different ways. You can either have a buyer upfront, and the buyer would have a clear title of the property, and then the school, students and teacher would build the house with contractors helping on that location. Or you can do it, the New Richmond, Moston, and other school districts have done it, where they build a house at the school site, then they move the house and put it up on-site. And then the other way, and most frequent way, is the portage way, I guess you could call it. Portage has done this for years, where they build one house or more, and then they sell it. And this summer, I read an article, I believe, Sean, do you remember, was it 183 or 283,000?
I don't remember.
I think it was, well, anyway, they built a nice home. And it was interesting, because one of the previous students in the class that was working for 10 years now bought this house that was built. And they actually sold two, I believe, this past year, built a couple homes and then sold them. So it has been going on for quite a while. I'm sure other districts have the answers to many.
So New Richmond would be one of the closer ones to?
Yes, and also even, I believe Turtle Lake has some type of a.
Turtle Lake does.
Home-building program.
Now, and you showed the curriculum up there, so is this curriculum, do we create this ourselves, or?
We created all of these courses ourselves. We created this idea of how we're going to do it ourselves.
And the standards are based around state standards?
Yes.
And then we build the curriculum to match?
And some of these courses have existed prior to this, and some are newer.
Sure, sure.
And some of the courses are not new at all. Yes, we're going to follow the model of what many other districts do, but we're going to do it better than they. Because that's what we do in this district. We're going to make this one of the finest things we do, just as we're going to do with catering, just as we're going to do with hydroponics, aquaculture, just as we're going to do with entrepreneurship. CTE is exploding in Amory, which is why we're a model flagship for the entire state.
Right.
And not least of which is Josh Gange's skill in this area.
Is there, what do we call it, the crediting through the technical school that comes through this?
Transcripted credit?
Yeah, transcript credits.
Some of these courses are transcribed. Welding, too, is transcribed. There are not a lot of transcription opportunities in Tech Ed, not like there is in Business Ed and Family and Consumer Ed. But there are newer ones being developed. We are very close to offering technical diplomas to our kids in the area of Business Ed. That's how many transcripted courses I have at email in my inbox right now from WITC.
Is that the end game in this?
The end game is to prepare our kids for post-secondary by giving them skills and hopefully experiences, which will get them to want to enter into a career, live here and raise a family here. That's the end game.
But, but as you look forward, you know, in your crystal ball, a CTE diploma.
A CTE diploma would be side by side with the.
Is that, is that something you see, you envision this district doing in what sort of timeframe?
Within the next three years. I would like to create, what we're doing with CTE Academy in Amory, I am hoping, will be such a success, we are going to attract kids from all over this part of the state, and they're going to drive here, and they're going to send their kids here, because they want that opportunity. That's what's happening out in the Northeast with Ag. That's what's going to happen here. And the reason it's going to happen is because of the skill level of our instructors and the ingenuity of our kids. And that, not everybody has.
Do you see, envision down the road, then we're going to need to add staffing into the, into that program as well?
We may, and resource, because these are not going to be anything other than, in some cases, costly endeavors at the beginning.
Right.
But you're looking at having turnover, where you're generating a profit, where it's less costly and rather a profit to the district.
So we're using the licensing, then, of all those contractors that, so our kids basically apprentice underneath their licenship, right?
Correct. We're not going to send our kids out to the wolves, and they're not coming in doing the work separate from our kids. We want them to work with our kids. As an example, when I was meeting every Thursday, Jim and I, or nearly every Thursday over the summer, met with the folks working on the new Family and Consumer Ed classroom and lab, and when they heard we were doing this, they literally stopped the meeting and said, I would like to talk to you, I would like to talk to you, I would like to talk to you, every, every area, plumbing, HVAC, they all wanted to. And they said, this is exactly what schools should be doing. Because these are the classes that I wanted when I was in high school. When I was sitting in English, I was thinking about this. And, but those kids haven't gone away. We have them right in Amory, and we're going to give them an opportunity to shine. Go ahead.
Yeah.
I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
You just talked about the apprenticeship, kind of the licensing, all that is, so Mr. Gange is still the.
He's the general contractor.
In every one of these classes?
He is still the teacher that's going to bring these kids out on-site, yes.
And then as far as the timeline, since you got it started in the spring, and I guess in my mind, I was thinking, okay, it's the house class, but it's not really the house class. It's a ton of different classes working on the same project.
It is.
Okay, so they would not necessarily sign up for the class to build the house? And they would sign up for areas of interest, and then part of that?
It's going to begin with a core group of 10 or 12 kids. Josh can't bring out 30 kids, and he certainly needs more than five. So he's going to bring out, he keeps saying 10 to 12 would be perfect. And during the spring, we're going to get ready to build the house. During the summer, we're going to have the materials. And then in the fall, we're going to get that thing to a point where we can enclose it before the weather hits, and then we're going to be able to finish it off and sell it.
And different kids will be jumping in at different portions of the project, depending on what class, what skill levels they have, right?
It's going to be the core of 10, 12 kids. But we're going to need help from other kids and from other classes.
Well, I mean, because you talked about Emily getting her team, her kids in there, too.
Because it's not often the case that the kid that's in construction is also the kid that's in interior design. Those are two different worlds, typically. I mean, let's just be honest.
Right, right.
Have you, Josh, ever explored buying an existing house or remodeling it in the community here?
I think Josh would be very excited to hear you say that. He said, I would be the guy that would flip houses, I just haven't taken that jump yet.
Yeah. Yeah.
But he would be the guy. And we're here at this point, I'll give accolades to Josh Gange, we're here largely because of Josh's skill level. We brought him to town for that reason, because he's a guy that can get this done. We can't do this without an excellent instructor, and he is just that guy. The same is true of Emily and Ramona, and the same is true of Derek.
I'd like to add just a little bit, that there have been conversations going on for over a year now about leading up to this, and, and Mr. Durfle was right, Mr. Gange is the right person to lead this endeavor, and I'm excited about it, because I've had contractors, subcontractors talking, people like Joe Berghammer and Dan Faust and other builders, and people in the trade saying that there are family sustaining wages that can be earned, $30 to $50 per hour type wages, so $60 to $100,000 types of jobs that kids can get with very minimal educational investment. And they can have family sustaining wages, living in Amory, or go work in Hudson or the Twin Cities, but they could actually do it right here, build houses here, and have a great career and great job doing this, and learn right here in our high school as they're going through. So I second what Dr. Durfle said, is that this is one of the most exciting things that Amory has going with all the CTE, the career tech ed academies and all of these areas, building houses, catering, the marketing and business part of it, agriculture, and it's a great time.
It's very exciting, and I'm happy to be a part of it. By all means, I'm not going to be swinging hammers in the same way as some others are, but I'm so happy to be a part of it, because it's very exciting.
They use power nailers now.
I also second what?
There'll be some hammers, Keith.
What Sean said too as well, is we will be doing it the Amory way. And so we look at all these other programs, but how we do it in the end, it will be the Warrior way that we end up doing it.
It's not going to be any other way than quality if Josh Gange's part of it.
Well, I just, you know, speaking for myself, and, and the other board members can obviously speak for themselves, but these are the types of things that, that you have my full support on, you know, whether it's Emily's, that, that academy, and some of the other things that we've, I mean, the Montessori, the, the PBLs, all of those, when we start stepping outside of the box of what people perceive as traditional education, and start giving kids that have strengths in other areas, and, and really focusing individually on educating every kid, you know, these types of things, that, obviously, we have financial constraints, but?
Of course.
It's our job to find a way to pay for those things. So you absolutely have our, my support on, on those types of things.
And we appreciate that very much, because without it, this doesn't work.
Yeah.
Other questions for me?
Thank you.
We're looking forward to Dean coming back with more recommendations.
Absolutely. We'll see you in November on that.
Yep. Great, thank you, Sean. Okay, move on to our action items now. First off, a resolution on a EEE, Mr. Cookedup.
Okay, this is a resolution being brought, brought forward to the board. It happens to be the same dollar amount as what the board approved last year and utilized, the $340,000. Now, I want to mention that this is in the budget and in the current dollar amount with the current levy, which has decreased from last year. However, we're looking at an estimated only about $130,000 that we would be projected at this point, at this time with our current evaluation, current student enrollment and so forth. So it's likely to be a much lower amount, and that's even if it will be allowed after the governor signs the biennial budget and whether the veto pen strikes any of this information. It's been a hot topic, and we actually threw the legislature over the past few months, and we, the, the board did pass a resolution last year, and we used McKinstry for the energy efficiency exemption, and it would be actually continuation of using that company for similar type projects. And all the projects this coming year, according to George Sigsworth, our maintenance director, would be for lighting. And there has to be a performance contractor, and it would be, this performance contract shows how the district would save money in the long run, and so I put this resolution forward to the board.
So if I'm correct, if I'm correct in understanding this, and the levy that we brought tonight, actually, I'm looking at this in terms of the referendum, so the levy that we approved tonight is less of a mill rate than what we had a year ago, correct?
And that is including the $1.9 million?
Right, so with the, just so people are clear, that what we said all along regarding the referendum is true, and that, that that mill rate is less, and it includes just a different way to finance some of our energy stuff. So, so we still are going to levy less with more money, thanks to the referendum. I think that's a, that's a huge win for our school district and, and our taxpayers. And this, we don't have to spend all this. This is just sitting there, and I think one of the things that we've been talking about on Building Grounds is this would, this would be the way that we would do our lighting, which is part of the referendum projects that we had talked about all along anyway. So just, it's more of a paperwork way to do things and keep our taxes less than they were last year. So, am I right in that?
Correct.
Okay. Want to make sure. So can I get a motion to accept that resolution?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, Lynn, is there a second?
A second.
Is there discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Opposed? Okay. Next, we'll move on to our policies. We do have several of them. I think most of them are close to the same as last month, correct?
There's a very minor tweaking on any of the wording of the policies, but we did have discussion, I had discussion with WASP attorney, attorneys on these policies. Essentially, there were just a couple of words changed, which made sense, and so all the changes are here in edit form in these policies. What I might mention is the annual, or rather, the meeting, regular board meetings, the wording that we updated. So we had, I guess the portion on the bottom is new from what you saw last month, because we had wording that takes out the 7:00 PM designated time, and the board already took action to change the time to 6:30 for essentially all meetings this year. However, the attorney pointed out, in the event that the board fails to specify exact starting time for a regular meeting, for which it established the date, the board president may fix the time. So that's new wording, not a big deal, just a way that we can set the time if the board chooses to not set a time.
And the other change that I had Jim make was in regards to setting agendas, the policy that they proposed had said, had given the district administrator the authority to set agendas, but I also included the, the board president in that, so that. Just because I, for down the road in history, I think it's important that the, somebody from the board is, or the designee is involved in the setting of agendas. So, and you all know this, that I meet with Mr. Cookedup monthly to, to make sure that we're all good on that, but I think?
So that's the one that's on the board now?
The board presence and the agenda setting is an important thing, so I had, had that.
Yep, it's the first line up there, 171.2, to be approved by board president or designee.
And it's the way we've been doing it for years, way before I was even board president, that's the way it was always done. We just never had it in writing on there, so. Otherwise, I think everything else remained pretty close to the exact same, didn't it?
Yep. Yeah, the purchasing policy was the big one that kind of started the discussion, and essentially, we removed the old language and put in all new language to update the purchasing policy, with an emphasis on looking at local purchases, in essence, first and foremost.
Yeah, this is the one that caused all the other rabbit holes that we have sitting here that we had to go down, because we'd find something else, and, oh, no, that's not working right, and we'd find something else and, and whatnot. So mostly, it was as we were trying to find the policy, we said, hey, what's this one on there? So, but the purchasing policy, Keith and I spent a lot of time on that. I'm pretty happy with, with that. That's, that finally puts it in writing, that the board wants local businesses to have the opportunity to basically bid on, and quote, "Our jobs first," so.
We've had a chance to, this is the second reading.
Yep.
So I'd like to make the motion to accept them as a whole.
Okay.
As they're documented.
All right, so we have that motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second. Any other discussion on that?
Has, did the legislature throw out that portion of taking the lowest bid?
I don't think that made it into the budget. I think that, but that was, that was a separate?
Yeah, it's, it's not part of the biennial budget that we're aware of.
I know, they, they budgeted around that.
It's a few hundred pages, and it just went to the governor's desk, so it's yet to be seen.
Okay. They removed some dates and a few other things, but they did, you know, the, yeah, that wasn't part of the, it came out of the budget at least. Although, who knows, they could change that next week and slam it through one way or another.
My hope regarding energy efficiency exemption is if that portion does get vetoed to eliminate what the legislature has talked about and promoted. The, the legislature can override a veto with two-thirds vote.
Yeah, I doubt that.